Good evening. We're gonna have our invocation by Pastor Taj Lance from Family Life Missionary Baptist Church of Jonesboro be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please stand with me.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another time, another opportunity. Oh God, another gathering. We thank you for these, Lord, who you have appointed as leaders over this community, Lord. We pray that you use them, Lord, guide them, speak through them, Lord, touch them, Father God, allow them to operate under your anointing, Lord. Thank you for these, oh God, who would gather, voice concerns, voice opinions, Lord Jesus. We pray that you have your way through these sessions, Father God. Allow nothing to tangle, twist the minds or, oh God, stop us from moving forth as a people, Father. We thank you for all that you've already done and all that you will continue to do. We praise you, we lift you up, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening to everyone. Prior to the adoption of the agenda, I would ask if any board members would like to offer any amendments. Hearing nine, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as is?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Approval of the January 6, 2015, regular business meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the January 6, 2015, regular business meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. It appears, Mr. Chairman, that most of the individuals have signed up, have signed up for zoning, zoning matters, and I did just want to inform everyone that has signed up in reference to zoning matters, you will be heard at the time that the actual zoning is being addressed by the board. So just make sure that you fill out the zoning cards that's located as you walk into the entrance of the boardroom. Mr. Chairman, it does look like 10, 11, 12, and one that's written underneath. It looks as though these individuals, at least two or three, are here for some rezoning that's not being addressed today. I'll pass that to you. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residence for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Madam Clerk, you said 10, 11, and 12?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that are not, North Bridge is not on the table.
She's, she's, no. I believe she's going to be speaking on a rezoning that's upcoming. It's the North Bridge rezoning. This matter has not come before the board yet at this time.
So she doesn't need that card?
So she does not need to?
You can discard it.
To the Commissioner, to our honored board, my name is Emma Atterberry Smith. I live in Clayton County, and on behalf of the North Bridge Estates Homeowners Association, I stand before you this evening. You may not know, or you may know, North Bridge has struggled for a number of years by protests, court procedure, much prayer to get our community to where it is today. Though not perfected, we still feel that our community is worth fighting for, as fervent now as ever, and to maintain whatever is necessary so that we can continue with the integrity that we have been led to believe about our community. In terms of what the group Crown Builders wants to do in and to our community is unacceptable to all who live there. Crown Builders has and is still building all around and through our immediate community. And because of this, they will not be a loser, because I'm sure with the number of houses they are in the process of building or have built, that if they have to comply with the 33 percent that our community now has and has been previously zoned for, there's no money to be lost. Though we have not been asked to any of their luncheons, we have not been asked to any of their meetings in a casual and professional manner to discuss why they want to do this, all of the concerns that have been addressed by the builders, Crown, and with those who have represented us, have come with the attitude that they are not willing to invest in our community other than to do what they want to do, which is to not comply with the previous, well, with the zoning that is now in process. And of course, we thereby take offense and distraught to think that our dream of what our community can be could possibly be compromised, that the size of our homes in proximity to where we live with our neighbors, and the possibility that our property values would be depreciated if their request is granted. It's just simply appalling for us. And it's for this reason that we at North Bridge, and they put me up here to speak to you, I don't know why, but I'm very, very interested in my community. It's why I chose to stand here. And we petition the board that the rezoning for our committee, community, be denied so that we can continue to maintain our community's present status. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm before you today just to weigh in and ask the Commission to expedite the issue that I read about in the paper that came to light only from in the paper a couple of months about the situation between Chief Turner, I mean, I'm sorry, Chairman Turner and Chief Porter, the issue that came with the, and I won't go into the minutia, because you know it was first reported in Clayton News on Friday, December the 12th, and it was a email done that they, that Chief Porter sent Chief Cohelus on November the 17th, and AJC did an article on December the 13th about it. And the reason that I'm before you, because I didn't want to weigh in on it, but when an article came in AJC about the security detail reached $340,000 on last Thursday, Tammy Joy on the call and asked me for a quote about what I thought about the detail, which at the time I didn't give it much thought, because, you know, all Commissions have details, and when she compared it to Carl Fulton and Gwinnett and said their Commissioners didn't have any security detail, I just said, well, that could be more police officers on the, on crime fighting on the streets. But that, but not, that's not the reason I'm before you. But the reason I'm before you is that, you know, I don't know the timeline, I don't know, I know it's under investigation, but I just want to ask that you as a board just expedite it. Like I said, I had no plans on bringing this before you, but when newspapers, you know, started to write articles, you know, on it, I just think it's time for me personally weigh in, because I'm gonna tell you all, starting in February, I'm going to come before you about murder and crime. The Commission supported murder, and I know you all ran on it, Commissioner Rooks and Chairman Turner about murder, so I didn't say anything about murder, because I know it was a done deal. You listen to your constituents. However, I am of the contention that it will bring more crime. I've assembled all of my newspaper articles, past and present, to counter support my view, because now that it's passed, I'm going to come on public comment very strongly about my concerns that it will raise crime. I know it will bring jobs into the county, I have no doubts about that. All of the good things that you all said, the key is who's more right, whether you are more right or whether I'm more right. But I do feel it will be, bring a criminal element into the county, and we need to be prepared. So I want to make sure that the situation with Chief Porter is solved. He doesn't know that I'm saying this, I want to make that clear, because you all know I support the Police Department, in terms of what I will bring before the Commission, because I don't discuss, because you know this is on my volition. So I just wanted to make sure that whatever timeframe you have to expedite the situation and solving the matter, please do, because when, in February, it's budget time, and I'm gonna come before you and make my voice be known about my concerns intelligently, and having articles that support my point of view, and I just want to make sure that the situation, his concerns and the concerns that were brought up, you know, that have been publicized in the paper, because that's how I learned about it, in the newspaper, because I read the newspaper, and it came to light, and they, Clayton News Daily published a memo, you know, that's how it came to light me. So I just want to make sure it's, it's worked on and solved to, for completion. So, thank you very much.
Green Earl, or Sherick Green?
My name is Cheryl Green Earl. I live in North Bridge Estates in Clayton County, and I also have come to voice my opposition to the change in the zoning for the side entry garages from 33 percent to 9 percent. As Ms. Atterberry stated, there are lots of people in our community who oppose it. I'm gonna speak for myself. As a homeowner in that community, when I purchased my home, I was given information about the expectations of the level of quality and the level of quality of life that would, I would expect as a homeowner in North Bridge Estates. Part of that formula was that there would be a certain number of side entry garages to the commu, in the community, built in the community. Side entry garage homes cost a little more, and therefore, the value is more, therefore the comps in the neighborhood would be reflected in the, the price of those homes. As a homeowner, as a taxpayer, as a voter, I have a concern, because reducing the number of side entry garages would reduce the comps in the area, and then would negatively affect the value of my home. I believe that many of my neighbors feel the same way, and I also believe that the concerns of the community, the neighbors, the homeowners, people who live in the community, who will be here in the community long after the builders are gone, have made their money and moved on, should trump the concerns and the wishes of the builders. I know they have to make a profit, I don't deny them that. However, they'll make their money and they're out. They're building all over this county and all over the, the community, all over the metro area. When they're gone, we have to deal with the aftermath. And as Ms. Atterberry said, our community has struggled to maintain the quality, and I believe that going forth, anything that is built or put in our community should be, at a minimum, the standard that we have now, if not better. We deserve better, we expect better. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Judy Simone. All right, I believe that concludes.
Completing the public comment portion, the board will now consider requests of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Good evening. Central Services has five requests.
All right, please take them all together, but before you do, is there any item that any board member would like to take separately? Hearing none, proceed on.
Can you introduce the new director?
We did that last week, didn't we?
No, she wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Well, before you start, this is Ms. Deborah Brewer. She is our new Central Services Director. How about giving her a warm welcome and a round of applause? Welcome aboard.
Pursuant to Section 2, 136 of the Clayton County Court of Directors.
Could you speak a little bit more into the mic, please?
General purchasing methods. We request a 90-day contract extension for our RFP package 1122 ethanol and ultra-low self-fulfill annual contract awarded by the Board of Commissioners on November 8, 2011. This request is to amend the current contracts with AR Brooks Enterprises Incorporated, located in Smyrna, Georgia, Mansfield Oil Company, located in Gainesville, Georgia, and Petroleum Traders Corporation, located in Fort Wayne, Indiana. This amendment is for a 90-day extension period from February 1, 2015, to April 30, 2015, to complete the rebid process as requested by the Fleet Maintenance Department. All of the vendors have agreed to accept the amendment. The second recommendation is to amend and renew RFP number 1234 Clayton County Police Vehicle Equipment Annual Contract, Fifth Amendment and Fifth Annual Renewal, awarded by the Board of Commissioners on October 2, 2012. The recommendation is to amend and renew the contract with Transcom Services Incorporated, located in Griffin, Georgia. The renewal period will be from February 1, 2015, to January 31, 2016. This is the final renewal for this contract. The third is recommendation for award, RFP package number 14-62 Panhandle Road Construction of a left turn lane at Eddie White Academy, Clayton County, Georgia, bid opening November 25, 2014. The recommendation is to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specification, Baldwin Paving Company Incorporated, located in Marietta, Georgia, in an amount of $488,316.90. Funding is available through the 2009 SPOSS funds. The fourth recommendation for award, RFP package number 14-68 Clayton County Information Technology Products and Services for Cisco, Tanberg, Webex, and Smartnex, annual contract bid opening December 17, 2014. The recommendation is for award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, and providing the highest discount and lowest cost service. This is Corporation Incorporated, located in Chantilly, Virginia. Funding is available through the Information Technologies General Fund fiscal year 2015. The fifth and final recommendation is to amend sole source CAD dispatch software upgrade contract awarded by the Board of Commissioners on September 7, 2010. The request is to amend the current contract with SunGod Public Sector Incorporated, located in High Point, North Carolina, in order to replace existing CAD servers with a virtual solution and to provide training. This service exchange will be at no cost to the county. SunGod Public Sector Incorporated has agreed to the amendment. I request that you approve all of the recommendations and authorize the Chairman, his designee, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Do I have a motion?
Will that we accept the requests and recommendations?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved in second. Are there any questions on any other items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
The next items, the board will consider our request of Ramona Thurman Bivins, Chief
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have two items for your consideration this evening.
All right, take them both together.
The first item is Budget Amendment 4-89 for 2009 SPOSS, is to amend the budget in the amount of $130,000 to provide funding for materials for the construction of a new traffic signal located at State Route 42 in the Project Atlantic driveway. The second and final item is Budget Amendment 2-16 for the Circuit Public Defenders. This is to amend the budget in the amount of $80,143 to recognize a refund check from Georgia Public Defender's Standard Counsel, and to reinvest in the Clayton County Public Defender's Office to continue to hire the services of local lawyers.
All right, do I have a motion?
Will you accept the request?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now hear and consider request of Kristy Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Good evening, board. I have four resolutions for your consideration this evening.
Please take them together, unless there's an item that a board member would like to take separately. Hearing none, please continue.
First is Resolution Number 2015-25, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept three forfeited vehicles from a Clayton County Police Department drug investigation to authorize the sale of such property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county, to provide for the dispersal of sale proceeds, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-26 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to continue its participation in the Federal Bureau of Investigation's Organized Crimes Drug Enforcement Task Force, known as the David G. Willem Strike Force, to authorize the Chief of Police to execute the memorandum of understanding, to authorize the Chairman to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required in the terms of the MOU, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-27 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to allow Emory University's project giving acts to host informational sessions regarding organ and tissue sharing at the South Clayton Recreation Center, to authorize the Chairman and the Director of Parks and Recreation Department, I'm sorry, and the Director of Parks and Recreation Department to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This is for January 27, February 11, February 19, and March 18, 2015. And Resolution Number 2015-28 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to dispose of 20 abandoned firearms in the manner required by law and pursuant to an order from Clayton County Superior Court to authorize the sale of such property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county, to authorize for, to provide for the dispersal of sale proceeds, to authorize the Chairman to execute any necessary documents, and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Do I have a motion?
Will you that we accept the resolutions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we need an executive session to discuss litigation.
Personnel.
Items number 12 and 13 are appointments to the Marty Board of Directors. These are two new members to serve a four-year term, expire on December 31, 2018. They are full board appointments. Are there any nominations?
Madam Clerk, I would like to recommend to the board Roberta Abdul Salan.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's four to one.
Mr. Chair, for the second, I'd like to recommend Mr. Shai Shalendra.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's three to two, it fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Jerry Griffin of Jonesboro, Georgia.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's three to two with Commissioners Hambrick and Gregory opposing.
Item number 14 is an appointment to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Janel Bridges, who has resigned. This term expires on June 30, 2016. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations this evening?
Looks like we're not ready to go forward.
Item number 15 is an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to fill the vacant seat of District Two Representative. This term runs concurrent with the appointing Commissioner, expires December 31, 2016. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to recommend Mr. Tyrone Keith.
Second, then.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Is Mr. Keith here tonight?
Item number 16 is an appointment to the Water Board, Water Authority Board, to fill the expiring term of Oscar Blaylock. This term is a five-year term, expiring on February 28, 2020. Are there any nominations this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Rodney Givens.
I'll second it. Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's three to two, passes. Commissioners Gregory and Hambrick opposed.
Item number 17 is an appointment to the Water Authority Board to fill the expiring term of Rodney Givens. This term is also a five-year term, expiring on February 28, 2020. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominees tonight?
We just did Rodney Givens.
Yeah, we just did Rodney. This one would be to replace Oscar Blaylock. And I would make the recommendation to appoint Cephas Jackson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's three to two. Commissioners Gregory, Hambrick opposed.
Now we are prepared for the zoning petitions. The first one is for Antonio Taylor, who is the applicant. He's requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a group home use. The subject property is located at 3783 Charlotte Drive, Rex, Georgia. Is the applicant present?
Please come up to the mic.
The applicant will please come forward. Do we have opposition? Do we have any opposition? Okay, the petitioner may speak if they wish to.
Somebody stood up.
Okay. We, we will first hear from the petitioner, and then we will hear from anyone that is
Good evening to all. My name is Antonio Taylor. I'm the proud, proud owner of Turning Point Youth and Family Service. I brought with me today my house supervisor, Ms. Brackens. Excuse me. Our mission at Turning Point is to have a positive and long-lasting impact on every child that we come in contact with. Our goal is to restore our youth to lives of purpose, meaning, and opportunity, and to serve our community. Our living situation will be a total of six boys from the ages of 12 to 17. We'll have eight staff members providing 24 hours supervision for the youths as well. Our staff members will be receiving excessive training in CPR, first aid, as well as mindset training. That will give them an insight on verbal judo, as well as team building. I'm a retired police officer, while I worked 14 years, and after five years of volunteering in a group home, after talking it over with my wife, I made the decision to pursue my, my dream, and that's to help kids as they go on in life as well. For us, with activities that we have for the kids, if it's okay with the board, I allow Ms. Brackens to come. That's what she specializes in, with the activities that we're gonna provide for our youth as well, if that'll be okay.
Yes, that's fine.
Good evening, everybody.
Please take the mic.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angel Brackens. I'm gonna be the house supervisor at Turning Point, and as far as the activities are concerned, the youth will participate in the Georgia Teamwork Program, which is sponsored through Defex. They will be allowed to have an internship around the community and participate. They will be allowed to have an internship around the community and participate in jobs. And the youth that are under the age of the requirements would also be involved in summer camp when we will use the, the local recreation. We also will have scheduled outings for the youth every weekend as well as enrichment activities and tutoring for educational purposes. Thank you.
And also, I would like to add, some of our biggest supporters are other people in the community. Back in September, we went door-to-door, and we met with the, we met with the residents. We told them what we'll be doing, and a lot of them is on board. November the third, we had an open house where we had the, uh, residents come out to the homes, and they're our biggest supporters. We're asking that you guys give us, uh, approval, not only to provide a loving and safe home for the kids, but also give these kids a chance they ordinarily would not have. Thanks.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Where, where do you live?
I live in Henry County, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, anybody here in opposition? Please come forward, please.
Did you have an opportunity to fill out the zoning card? If you don't mind, if you'll pass that to me? Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Board members, Commissioners. My name is Addie Whitaker, and I understand that they're wanting to start group homes in District One. First of all, uh, I mean, it's great that, you know, they want to do this for the boys. And my, my skeptical reason for this is the threat of safety, security issues, and the value of property going down, and the insurance going up. And once these group homes start, they have a tendency, like they say, to get started, get going, make a profit, then they move on. Then the neighborhood, in an essence, is left holding the bag. Because anytime you want to sell your home, if someone comes in and finds out there's a group home within the neighborhood, your home is not gonna sell. So I'm requesting, and I'm in opposition, that no homes be started in District One. And also, I feel that there is a place for a group home, but it should not be in a residential area, if you can understand what I'm saying. So I'm in opposition of any group homes in District One. Thank you.
Okay, before you leave.
Not for her.
Oh, for, not for her, okay. Is there, oh, thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else in opposition? All right, Ms. Taylor.
No, she's got somebody coming.
Oh, please, sir.
A good evening. My name is, uh, Rondo Young. I'm, uh, this is a new experience for me, getting me for you. Uh, but I, I'm here to voice my opinion as to being in opposition of this group home. It just came to my attention that this home was going to be, uh, put up for a group home. The street that I live on, there was no signage that we knew of, of this happening. And, um, so I drove down there and saw the sign and realized this is actually going to take place. Property value will go down. I talked with the real estate agent, definitely there might be a problem with that, of selling of your property. I've heard things in the past about homes where I'm not sure the people are going to be, young, young men will be either mentally impaired or of anything of that nature. I've heard where there was people who had these homes, there were people who were urinating in yards and stuff in the past. This might not happen with yours. But I am in opposition, and I stand here before you today as a homeowner in that subdivision, that I, my request to you is to deny on the grounds that it would change the community, it would not be a betterment for the community, and I speak in opposition of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Ms. Taylor, you have anything to say in rebuttal?
Commissioner, for the same reason, the, uh, they want, they're in opposition is the, one of, some of the main reason I want to do it. Group homes have get, have been given a bad reputation. In the five years that I worked within the group homes and volunteered, the things I noticed was the, the group homes that had the support of the community did the best, and the group homes that didn't, they wasn't some of the best group homes. So out of these two, I don't know how I did not get to them, but I have numerous of people in the neighborhood that is supportive of this. I had an open house. They came out to the house. They have donated clothes. Uh, I even had one of the residents willing to teach the kids Spanish. We have reached out to several peoples in the community, to name the church. We have Ms. Nikki Braxton. She's the youth pastor at Atlanta Christian Church. Uh, we did a lot of reaching out into the community. Uh, we went up to the schools. We met with the principal. There's a lot of work that we have done. And I apologize that I missed those two and wasn't able to give them the information. Uh, group homes have gotten a bad name, and what we have going is gonna be a preventive, prevent, preventive maintenance for these kids. And it's gonna be a good thing for the community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Board members?
I have a question. In the material that we were presented, it says there will be two adults who will supervise these six boys for twenty-four hours. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. We have a total of eight, but we're running the shifts. There's gonna be shifts. So two adults at all times will be supervising the kids.
Okay, and since you live in Henry County, how is it that you selected Clayton County?
Initially, Henry was my first choice, but Henry has a two-acre minimum. And with finances, we couldn't find a home with two acres to do it in Henry. That was my initial plan to do it in Henry.
What's our men, what's our requirement?
Uh, we just require a specific zoning district. So that would be the, the estate residential, the RS one eighty, RS one ten.
Ms. Rook, Ms. Rook, I believe in what I'm doing, and I would have initially put it in Henry County. It's just the two, the two-acre minimum was something that we could not afford to do.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I see that this is on zero point two six acres. So you have a, a minimum of two adults working shifts. So tell me about parking or ADA access, anything of that nature.
Yeah, absolutely, sir. We have, we have a long driveway. I don't know if you've seen the pictures of the home. Parking would not be a problem, and we don't have any ADHD assets right now because we won't be accepting kids that'll be needing wheelchair.
So they're all just gonna park in front of each other along this narrow driveway, or are they gonna park on the grass?
Well, well, no, sir. They'll be able to park right behind each other. We only have two staff members at, at a time in the driveway, so no one will be parking on the street.
How many rooms are in this house?
Five.
And you have how many kids?
Six.
I, I heard eight somewhere.
Plus the two adults.
Oh.
It's a si, it's six kids maximum. That's the maximum amount of kids that we can have.
Two adults?
Yes, ma'am. And adults, they won't be staying, like, living in the home. Like, we'll be on eight-hour shifts. We'll be, it'll be shift work. So it'll be two adults at all times supervising the kids, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny this petition.
Second.
Probably move to the second. Any other questions? Here or none, those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Sorry.
The next zoning petition is the Faginswood Subdivision. The applicant Stephen D. Moore, on behalf of Scarborough and Rolander, is requesting a rezoning to a PUD district.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Moore. I'm with Moore Bass Consulting, uh, three twenty-four Industrial Boulevard, McDonough, Georgia, representing Scarborough Rolader in the rezoning of thirty-six acres on Fagan Road, um, from RS one-ten to PUD. This property, uh, was originally rezoned in two thousand and four to RS one-ten. In two thousand and six, the same property received preliminary plat approval and construction plan approval and proceeded with construction on the, uh, the infrastructure that is there today. To date, all the roads are in, the utilities are in, with the exception of a lift station, but the water system, sewer system, storm system, everything is in. Um, and around two thousand and six, that construction, once it was complete, the project essentially has sat dormant since then. While it sat dormant, the previously approved, uh, preliminary plat, uh, had expired. Um, and the zoning that exists today did not support the development that was built at that time. So, uh, which is why we're here in front of you tonight. We have gone through numerous meetings we've held with staff to, uh, discuss the plan and various options to try to accommodate, uh, the best we can. And the initial plan that was submitted to you, uh, contained ninety-six lots. That's, and that was the original approval that was granted. We took, went through the TRC review process. As a result of that, uh, we reduced the total number of lots down to ninety-five. Uh, in addition, we, uh, proposed an enhancement of a ten-plus acre, uh, park area that is shown in the, on that plan here, uh, that originally was just a conservation area, uh, to preserve existing wetlands that are there. Uh, we proposed to enhance that by adding a trail system in addition to some grassed, uh, lawn areas, uh, picnic tables, barbecue grills, uh, pavilion, and, uh, playground to be owned and maintained by the HOA and the subdivision. Um, so as the planning process continued on, and the, in an effort to refine, uh, this plan, uh, we continued to meet with staff, and, uh, the last version that you have in front of you tonight represents, uh, a plan that reduces this, uh, that previous version I've mentioned by twelve lots, basically eliminating all the lots that backed up to Fagan Road. Um, in addition, we converted that land to open space that again would be owned and maintained by the Homeowner Association. In addition to that open space, which we believe does enhance the quality of life for these residents, we also have landscape buffers along each perimeter, uh, boundary to further buffer those lots from the adjacent uses. That represents the plan that I believe you have in front of you tonight. Um, but even since then, we've had, uh, further refinements made to the plan. I want to present that to you as well. This plan shows a total of eighty-five lots. That includes the twelve-lot reduction that I mentioned previously. In addition, you'll notice that we have eliminated the access to Dixon Industrial Boulevard. So the only access that this subdivision has is by the two existing driveways located on the north and south ends of the property accessing Fagan Road. In addition to that change, uh, we are proposing a six-foot-high wooden privacy fence to buffer these lots here, uh, the development area of, uh, between the development area and these existing lots on Fagan Road. I mean, on Dixon Industrial, excuse me. In addition, we're proposing, uh, twenty-two-foot minimum-wide driveways on each lot in an effort to provide side-by-side parking to avoid and discourage anybody from parking in the streets, which obviously could become a problem. In addition to those changes that are reflected on the plan, there are twelve additional, uh, written changes. I believe you have a copy of. Is that correct? If not, okay.
I just handed a copy down.
Okay, or I'll be happy to read them if you would like me to read them.
Sure.
Okay, let me hand.
Thank you.
And if I could, I, if you'd like, I'll read you the additional conditions that we've proposed. Homes to be staggered at varying intervals of three feet, um, so that it doesn't look like all the lots are, or all the houses are in the same location. It'll give a more pleasing effect. Two-story homes should be a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet. Ranch homes having no more than one bed or bath upstairs, a minimum of sixteen hundred square feet. Homes should be limited to a maximum of two stories, except for basement homes, which could be three stories, including the basement. Front and side exterior elevations of all homes shall include shutters on the windows. All exterior elevations of the ranch homes shall be constructed with brick or stone. The exterior front elevations of the two-story homes shall consist of a minimum of twenty-five percent brick or stone. Remaining materials may consist of cement, fiberboard, or stucco. The exterior side and rear elevations of the two-story homes shall be constructed with a minimum of twenty-four-inch water table consisting of brick or stone. In addition to the street tree, all lots shall include the minimum planting of sixteen shrubs in three varieties, and one additional tree, two varieties, within three groupings in the front yard. Duplication of exterior color combination of brick, stone, stucco, or cement, fiberboard shall not be permitted within a minimum of two lots. All garage doors to be carriage-style with hinges and pulls. All lots to be sodded. All access to subdivision will may, be made via the two existing entrances to Fagan Road only. No access to Dixon Industrial Boulevard shall be permitted. A six-foot-high wooden privacy fence should be provided along the developed areas adjacent to the existing residential lots on Dixon Industrial Boulevard. And driveways shall be a minimum of twenty-two feet in width to provide side-by-side parking for two cars. My applicant is in agreement with all of these changes and these conditions, and at this time, I'd be happy to address any questions that you've got.
Are there any questions?
We have to go to the opposition?
I do.
We have to go to the opposition first, right?
I just have a quick question. I just wanna make sure I got this. Did you say you were reducing from ninety-five, ninety-six to ninety-five?
No, ma'am, ninety-six to eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
The original, very first change was from ninety-six to ninety-five. There's been several changes since then.
Okay, is there anyone here in opposition? Opposition? Now it'll be time to come up and speak. Come on, ma'am.
I have four acres right along the power line, and we already have enough in the neighborhood, and we've had a lot to fight for it. But we need to be able to get in and out of our subdivision and be peaceful and quiet. And it's just not gonna happen with so many people trying to get in and out of the same place. Going to the doctors in the morning, red light there, but you still can't get out. I don't know anything more to say, except it's just disgusting to have to keep coming down here and fighting over and over to have peace in the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like, like to speak out, uh, opposition? Come forward, please.
The previous speaker, um, was confused. We were under the impression that perhaps there would not be the closure of the Dixon Industrial Boulevard entrance. Um, we understand that that is going forward. We appreciate, um, Commissioner Edmondson, um, brokering this agreement between us and the, the community and the, um, developers, and we all are in agreement that we feel it can go forward.
Was that the only concern that, because we got a lot of correspondence?
Right, we did have many concerns. Um, we feel, though, that with the closure of the Dixon Industrial Boulevard, um, entrance, it really separates that from our community, so the other, um, issues that we felt won't impact us. Um, we felt what we were most concerned with was the traffic, um, emptying out onto Dixon Industrial Boulevard.
And the fence for those people adjacent also.
Thank you, sir. Anybody in opposition? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve with the stipulations as read into the record.
Is there a second? I'll second it, probably move to second. Any other questions? Here or none, those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed. 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 I guess it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if there is no further business to discuss, there was a previous request to have an executive session on litigation and personnel.
Oh, I meant to say something.
Miss Reddigan?
I know. I, I meant to say something. Since we don't have a work session anymore, I'm trying to find out why Senior Services hasn't done anything for Ms. Maggie Kid. We're supposed to have a centenarian group or whatever. They haven't done anything. I mean, she's been honored on different radio stations, all over the paper, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a motion for executive session?
To say, you know, hey, you a hundred and ten years old.
Mr. Chairman. We need a motion for executive session.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Well, before, before the motion. I'm sorry.
If I get everybody's attention please, the meeting has not adjourned yet.
Yeah. I have a comment before the, um, motion for the executive session. I, I was just speaking with the chairman, and I'm, I don't know if anybody's here from Senior Services, but I'm, I'm disappointed. We have, uh, celebrated one of our residents that's a hundred and ten years old. She's been celebrated all over TV, newspaper, whatever. I have not heard anything from Senior Services regarding this, and I know we have this centenarian, um, group or whatever that has been formed, but I have not seen or heard of any kind, type celebration. And I think that's a celebration to be had for a hundred and ten-year-old resident of our county.
We'll definitely get that taken care of.
And, anybody here from Senior Services?
No, they don't have anything on the board. Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
I'll second it. Probably move to second. Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed.